Call the regular council meeting for August 22 order. First order business, call for pecuniary interest regarding the agenda. Anybody have any? Heard none, we'll go to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions, deletions, does anybody know? Not, and I can I get a motion to accept the agenda as is?
I can make that motion.
Okay, on favor? Here, should be able to get you right today.
There's only one of me.
All right, option the previous minutes, the regular meeting minutes from July the 25th, public hearing of the LWB for August 8th and the community of all meeting minutes for August 8th. Are there any errors or omissions?
Couldn't open, Jesse, I could only open the first one. When I went to open the other two, it took me to sign into diligence.
Yeah, I could, I could scroll down through the whole big long thing. But I think I kind of similar. I just had to scroll all the way.
The first one, it took me right in, and then the second one, I kept trying.
I think that happens to me, but if you scroll through the whole document in your email, everything's at the bottom.
Oh, like, I just keep going.
That's what I'm doing, I scrolled through it earlier, I just didn't know what's next before I... It's all good, but you're like...
Do you want a minute to look at it, Kelly?
Um, no.
I just very quickly scrolling through, I don't know, I... All right, I mean, I moved to Dr. Mas, that's it. Well, I just did a very quick, I think I scrolled through quickly earlier today and then just now.
You're Corey or Shelley, you're Corey or Shelley, one of you do, so. All right, so, no public hearings, no presentation, new business, we'll go right to 8.1, the Regional Housing Foundation, wine and cheese. That's, I believe, we're just looking to see who wants to go.
I don't like wine, but cheese, the light, I was dead.
I know, I know that I've RSVP'd and I know Tracy has RSVP.
Okay. Okay, so can I get a motion for the people to go? Favor? Yeah, 8.2, peace officer contract. Here, Donna, do you would like to comment on that?
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you, worship. So, Tana Kalmar, the contract that you have in your package, Tana Kalmar passed it on the regular Monday night. Pretty much tell that the generalized contract, the chief officer of the country general has decided to put in what we, what we call a court in October for the peace officer. So the new one that Kalmar hires will go in October, which is good. I hope he'll be out by Christmas, and then we'll have a peace officer here in the year. So far, the current peace officer, Chloe Licio, is looking after our more difficult cases, and there hasn't been that many because Jesse and I were the last to go. So, that's a good thing, and we want to, as we know, a peace officer here for the violation ticket, that ticket, the original statute enforcement and court law enforcement where there's violations, that's not meaningful, okay? We have a call for service of help on this serious incident, and believe it or not, Devon's kind of interested in, out of price, the backstop being taken. They backed up Kalmar right now just to drive through, and they're interested, just to go check with the CPO with Mr. Vendetto, if, you know, if we needed somebody to drive through or whatever, if Kalmar can come and play. It's like a, it's like a regional kind of support. If we got another time, no, but if we needed somebody, in case we got a big event, so. Bottom line, Kalmar passed the deletion on their portion, not the peace officer. And I just gave you a bullet list of some of the operational things we've worked out. Operational far as frustration, but training, other than part shifts, we're looking, for now, 20 hours a week, get 10 hour shift, we may have less. For now, the, the peace officer, the mayor, we get to go through. Records management, Kalmar's going to provide that and Mellocka. For effect, that's the software, we're going to have to purchase it, that will compensate for it within your license. And we have an office forum in Dorsey. It's supposed to be, will be basically, getting everybody first, the one, comment on the bylaws, who wants, that's, that's the protocol that happens, dealt with. The extra training will be our cause, and after if we want more pressure vehicle enforcement, because we have the option mark here, and that will come along. Our AICF account, we'll have to get one that for ticket revenue, so that the court knows where to send it. A Rose account, we do have one, I just gotta re-stated that there's a peace officer that's going to be placed in Dorsey and use our Kalmar when it's at present place. Dorsey vehicle, it's sitting here, we thought it might be better if we use the gas card to use the gas, we do the maintenance on it, and Kalmar's going to need to play sport there, so that he can, Kalmar drives it over to you with it. It's a little mileage car, and it's a piece of the regular vehicle. APAC radio, Kalmar has one, he's in the radio, these radio systems that all peace officers are on, and Kalmar also has a dispatch business, so we don't have to worry about that. Supervision by monthly service of a means that'll be the CPO and, CPOs will be the peace officer. One is another account that we have, we just have to open it up and add it for clearing more and more vehicle registration information. This is Soul Gen stuff. Time to use the code, of course, to have that, and of course, still, what's the other regular in, I don't know, check that, so. A business card, I mean, of course, the M R email draft, computer, management systems we have, and other, so. It says, we put in the bottom, the town of Devon also puts, and Kalmar requires drop presence if they're going to use it. It's not going to happen right away, but we will have. We're recommending that the Dorsey, the CPO, the privilege agreement with Kalmar. So far, our budget left at about 250, so is that open? We'll just contract with the CPO.
I mean, jet, all in all, it's fine, I just, the way it's laid out here, I just have a question, because obviously I want to make sure it's right, because if there's, if we're going to get, that's just the person, I just want to make sure we have these graphs. It, in the preamble, it's, there's, there's a statement, and whereas the peace officer employed by Kalmar have jurisdiction and forces in the boundaries of Dorsey, municipal bylaws and provincial statutes and powers as follows. It doesn't actually anywhere down, or provide for the authority within the thing, for them to have jurisdiction. Where, where are we saying that they have jurisdiction within the Dorsey municipal borders in the first place? It's not actually stated anywhere, or like, yeah, like, how are we crossing that? Like, it's in the preamble, but it's not actually part of, like, where and how do we come up with that part of the preamble, because it's not included in the agreement?
Preamble, it's correction, it will be filled a solicitor general form that provides
Okay, but I guess my point is, yeah, that, that some, somewhere, there's going to be something actually providing that, that authorization, that jurisdiction, because it's not in here, I guess, so as long as there's a different process for that, that's being completed.
Yep, no, they, they don't have jurisdiction unless Soul Gen, could be okay?
I, I, yeah, I realize we, there's a, we have to have them authorized and to provide them jurisdiction, I know it wasn't included in here, other than that preamble, I guess was my concern, so.
Then it, well, it does stay under purpose?
Of course, the bylaws, I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's not clear that they've been actually approved and appointed to have jurisdiction in any clear sense. You know what I mean, like, it's clearly alluded to, but it's not, you know, just, so, I mean, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're actually crossing that T in case something were to become contentious.
You know what, we may, I kind of sort of go over some language here, because we, we definitely expressed that a little bit on the, yeah, give them jurisdiction.
Yes, it should be very, like, I guess my, it should be very explicit that we are hereby authorizing them to enforce bylaws and whatever in, and it doesn't actually spell that out, I guess, as clear as I would expect.
No problem, we will put that in.
Okay, yeah, just, yeah, like I said, seems like the sort of thing where someone might end up in court one day.
Do they get torn in as well as, like, the bylaw did, or is that?
No, they're torn in through, through general, through the training, the courses, and then we contract. They are torn in, but not by law.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, like I said, I just, yeah, it seems like it'd be nice to clarify for down there.
All right, could you go through, revenue is 1.8 on page 17, I don't understand what you say in there.
It's the great, any fines you have to enforce, it's sort of the appropriate means of how we use jurisdiction, and we'll call you jurisdiction. Okay, so what happens in a violation ticket? Is, let's say, near the, you know, I'm sorry, that you're Delta Market, and the bucket is separate, so the peace officer comes by, it is a bylaw, but he will issue a violation ticket. From that violation ticket, he will take bylaw, and then we have a court code that will clear and that way, in line of regulated rights of policy. And that, that's what that's meant, no time will, like, be issued anymore.
Yeah, okay, so then, okay, I got you. So then, at no time would municipal tags be initiated for the Alman endorsement, maybe?
You don't say before that's already, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Donna, I just have a question regarding the cost of the peace officer. Is that something we're going to track, like, cost versus value, what's coming in, what's going out, so we know, like, people are better off having that instead of a bylaw officer? Is that something we're going to look at, track?
Well, we don't, we don't track ticket revenue because they're not written generally, so what we, what we track is the amount of cases that are called in, the amount of cases that are solved and resolved, the amount of, of cases, it's open to happen, the amount of, of that, so, the amount of ticket revenue is not calculated. It could sound like we're reviewing that, as the agency, if there's a certain, so, we'll be the public management system, so that, if these cases, I don't know, for example, the date, the installation, the population, that sort of thing. So, it's, it's statistical, and what we're looking for, and I want to see if we really want to look at bylaw compliance, we're looking at self compliance. So, if, if, once your bylaw call starts to decrease, that's a...
I was just going to say, for sure, when you get the variance reports, you'll see the revenue and that's coming in, so, I understand what you're saying, but I agree, that the goal isn't necessarily to, let's give up the trillion tickets to try and make money, but you will see, you can go out of your way to interpret accordingly, and the variance, you know.
And really, in all, there's no revenue in the bylaw. Right, so what I'm saying, is this one costing us way more to...
You'll see the revenue come in, you know, it'll be always a delay by the time it trickles in, but over time, in the variance, you will see the, the trend, but the end result isn't to get tickets, I agree, it's, hey, if there's, if you look around and everything's all kosher in town, that's hopefully the result.
Well, yeah.
The other, the other thing, you'll never build a record title if you want to get the bridge, so, here would happen, let's say, court, Council Corey is the CPO, he writes 50 tickets. Let's say that those 50 tickets are worth $1,000, right? You won't be able to match the tickets to the revenue, because, let's say, 10 tickets are sold out, 100 tickets are slid down, some have gone to court. So Soul Gen determines, based on what the corporate readings are, their check that comes every month, so we just, we just record down generally. You know how many tickets are written? Because we have to submit the report, and those appear to have to be written, but they will never quote, ever, what the ticket is.
No, like I said, the actual revenue that comes in to us, you know, back, I mean, three months later or whatever, eventually you'll, you'll have it in there as a revenue, and we'll see it always as a delay, but you will have some sort of a trend at least.
Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Donna, but so, with, with, with the police, peace officer chair, if we issue a ticket now for the bylaws, got some teeth, you can issue it to the government, whereas before, we were stuck.
Yeah.
We had to, either get somebody to collect it, or send, you know, hire someone.
Yeah, the municipal tag's part of it, I think it's not a municipal, please pay it to get it to actual ticket.
Yeah, okay, you're not getting the driver's license.
Take counsel, your worship, out of the, out of the court, do these, because of municipal tags, they have the right to appeal to you.
Right.
This way, it gets completely out of it, and if someone to approach you and say, I got a bylaw tag for my grant, I mean, it's a thing.
Cool, yeah, if you got an argument, exactly, if you got an argument, I'm sure the judge would love to hear it, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, you're totally out of it. But it means to these administration too, right?
Yeah. Very clear and non-biased, and not arbitrary, and there is a, they're very, very detached, arms length, is what I think, way better.
50%, I totally agree with that, and, so, anyway, that's, that's kind of where we're at, you just have to set up some systems now with the rich government, and, and staff that they are setting these systems up, that we only have accounts over to do the math of, that will reset the accounts, I'm pretty sure will be ready to go by December.
Donna, the contract says September 1st, is that correct?
Or, you know, it does, because they're hiring this September 1st in Kalmar, so we, we don't have to spend any money, but they want the contract to be there.
Okay, I guess, did I get a motion to enter a seatable, CPO service group with Tana Kalmar with the opposed verbiage that you're going to change, and...
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I do need to accept the agreement with the change in one, I can't remember which section I was adding, the town in there, and the clarification as to jurisdiction, I agree those off?
Yeah, 1.1 and 1.2.
Yeah, so, yeah, with those two changes that apply.
Next, Corey, on favor? That is carried.
I will say, as a, as a final, that we're going to get work with Kalmar next season, if it might be.
I know, they, yeah, they want to work with us, they're, they're eager to work with us, like, it's great, yeah.
All right, 8.3, Chandler Commerce MOA. Your Donna, you know, when I go through that, that's the end worship.
This has been another pleasant experience, the chamber president is here tonight, because we wanted to show solidarity, but the...
Well, I can see the actual people that...
President Shawna and I were having, I guess, a discussion, I guess, with Taylor Park one day, and we talked about what Taylor Park wants to be used for, what Taylor Park could be used for, these and that, and all sorts of things, and, and President Shawna wanted to talk about maybe having the chamber look after the park. She had a book, one, but, yeah, put together a really easy MOA for the chamber to look after, and this chamber is a new and very active chamber, in a part of the dedicated park, including, what we typically call in the administration, pocket park, and it's also named that, and it's also set up for gathering, erecting. So, we had a good conversation with the chamber, we both worked on the name together, and have often been there, and discussed and debated, and we're like, we're recommending the council consider this MOA, that it's the kind of format, it's certainly supposed to refer to the community hall, that's, yeah, contract, so, I'm such a C I B, and now the chamber, so, recommendation and organization of passion and time, and we afforded the opportunity to participate on that. So, that's, that's what we saw, so the MOU, or the MOA talks about the purpose, we've got a collaborative relationship between the first weekend, the chamber commerce, and the town, and sets up obligations with the park. So, our objective is to lay this out through effective duty, and first, we'll collaborate foster, help the active community, supporting each other in project, essentially, this non-chamber requires various services in the town, and we'll do something that needs to change itself, I think that's a positive, a great, great showcase of a lot of collaborative spirit. And then, we'll collaborate on grants to continue to enhance the process, the town providing editing service in the chamber, finding the grant. So, we put together some things for the chamber, create upgrade funds, this is a position of park, and it's an upgrade, so reasonable, it's an approval, so, we're thinking every year's budget, chamber council, the plan, and council, and that, they'll provide the fireworks, but their schedule will be done, that require, require theirs. What would other community use the project, maybe, talk to the park, do that, private park free, receiving money for projects, will not be charged a piece of their activity, whole beautified class, and other services, which the park will clean. And then we just talked about moving the tree, that linden tree, the gorgeous tree, and it's, here it can be moved when it's spring or fall, but it can be moved backwards, because it will have a 40-foot hedge, so it's going to need that back part to, to spread, that wing can build that tree out first. Or we talked to Ivor, already mentioned it to Ivor, so, the linden tree could be planted, so, that's a fair call. And provide liability insurance, if we ever have general cleaning, civil club for the park, including fine trimming and manicure, the grass, and use the flower beds, certainly they can have a contractor, and you can have a contractor that's a cemetery, and that would have a contractor who called that, changing that, the house to give him permission from the drugstore, and, and, and that, that brown stuff. I'm so excited. And then when we face spitting all the trees, just, it's only, it's only the linden tree there that will start to take off the suckers at the bottom, so, first, for the town, we'll provide, board of marketing, supporting the town, support the union website, and we'll collaborate on how we're doing it, so, with that, it's just what, what we all want, provide a safe electrical facility, with an agreed upon timing, of course, formal request, electric deliberation, and I know at one time that that collective is going to dominate the electric there, maybe the government want electric there, the deficit especially, we only have a divided piece from budget. And we will not avoid, or we will not interfere in day-to-day operations, according to the general, according to the chamber, for what's cited, so. Chamber, we're not asking to release, delete it, or eliminate the platform, we're asking that we agree that the public will have administration in the next year, the chamber has a chance to do that, the areas of special use of platform, for the administration and the county, and kick off the evening, we'll accrue the agreed upon timing on that. And the chamber has already completed grants, and they make financial statements, that's the same clause as everybody else, just, just, so it's what's happening, and then the terms of agreement, like, every month, is... So, we have always a purpose, so we approve a body, and, and, and open.
I just, I was just going to say, the, there's a contradiction though, between, like, there's, in the case, there's going to be bookings and stuff, but I can't lease or rent it out, so that creates a good conflict. I understand that, like, fine, if, like, the chamber's not renting out money, there may be times where they need to have some sort of agreement, or some sort of function, that some group wants to use, or something, where, like, they may need to have an event license, or, sure, they may need to have an agreement for booking, and then it's saying that there's no lease or rental, so, when you're booking it, but it's not a lease or rental, it could create some weird conflict and confusion, that could actually be very problematic for a number of things. Like, that's my point, if you add a no cost, or whatever, maybe a better statement, like, I just, I could see how it could be very contradictory and conflicting, cause problems for a number of different functions and things that I thought of.
So if the chamber, if anything were to happen in the park during one of these events, would it be the chamber's insurance that would be the liability, or would...
And that's one of the things, I think, like, if somebody wants to hold some sort of function, where they may need, we may say, you can only use it, if you have your own insurance, there's only taking insurance, because we need to rent the thing to have our insurance covered, so, right, these are the sorts of concepts I was thinking of.
We have insurance liability, and you that we do, or whatever we do, or, we don't know what we need to help.
No, but if there was something that was over your risk tolerance, that somebody wanted to do something particular, your, your policies in covering, and you don't want to cover the extra liability, and you want them to, but then their, their carrier's going to say, well, then you need to rent, like, where's your rental agreement for where you're doing this thing, or, you know what I mean, like...
And it's still your park, so you...
Yeah, but like I said, booking it without actually renting it or leasing, even if it's a no-cost rental, there, there may need to be some provision for accommodating a no-cost rental.
Yes, yeah.
You're free of court, you're not held in court.
Yeah, so people, at least if we know, because it would be nice to know when people want to use it, we don't know wherever, but it's the same, we need to be ready for it, so, like, if we, we will make sure it's done before it happens, so, yeah, yeah.
A booking, a booking register form, right?
Yeah, yeah. So they would contact the chamber? Yeah.
But she's out there, and I'm pretty confident will come after.
Yeah, yeah, either of it.
Good honor, your attention to, you want to approve this tonight, or you want to bring it back for a second draft, or what do you want to do?
If council's comfortable with the, with Council Gilbert's change, if the chamber president's comfortable with it, or if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's, I'm just, we
Be okay with that, though?
I think so, and so, basically, I'm not sure who does first, but if you guys get it signed, I still have to go back to mine, obviously, especially because of the changes, so then, I'll get it signed, and our meeting's not actually Tuesday 1st, or whatever, so that's when I'll, we'll get the formal, because I, I don't want, we've been doing some emails, et cetera, just to have it formally at a meeting, right?
No, maybe, if we were to just, you know, table it until they get a chance, in case there's other stuff that needs changes, tweaks, whatever, or some verbiage, or whatever.
Yeah, no, I don't see a problem.
Let me first, let me bring it back at, let me first, it's...
That's when, yeah, that's when our next, it's like Thursday.
And you're 23rd, yeah.
Or right now, yeah?
Or the 26th.
Oh, then, maybe if we were to, yeah, wait till the 26th, then make sure it's just, get it right the first time.
Now, in the meantime, we had started that perennial garden, and we really want to get it done, so, or can we, I wouldn't have started until it was signed, but, would you be okay with that, or do you guys need to... You can kind of see the outline of it already, see? I don't know, we need to get it working, so. Yeah, well, we just want to get one thing done before it falls, so, I don't know if you guys want to, yeah, like, I could bring it, do that, something, a plan first, or maybe, like, that's the best.
If you're, probably can't pass with the time of the, so...
All right, I suppose we could probably make the, make the motion that we're talking about, and then allow them in the motion, in the motion that they can do this, but...
Yeah.
That's what saves you guys to do that. That's what saves you guys to do that.
Yeah, I don't really know the shape or format of the garden we're talking about, but I assume something weird or crazy, like, I have no idea what it is.
On the side of the G and N building. And I can send you, I can email Donna a map and send it to you guys after this, to see what kind of...
Actually, I think that first couple of feet against the building, there's grants. Technically, you got to ask Grant for that.
And we're actually putting gravel first on his, like, until our property line. We're just putting kind of gravel because he doesn't want to turn all the way up to his building, and then we'll...
Yeah, perfect. Somebody will make that motion then to put this off until the twenty-first, and then to allow them to do that work until we get done.
Twenty-sixth, yeah. I can make the motion to table this till the number twenty-sixth and give the Chamber permission to you get a primary party.
Okay, there you go. Now, you're not doing anything illegal.
Yes, I would do that, I know. Now, I'm leaving you.
I would have made a silver, so he would have been arrested.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if they give you silver bracelets for planting flowers.
All right, thank you.
All right, eight point four, audit fee adjustment, Safeway City.
Okay, so, the audit fees have increased by fourteen thousand five hundred. Because the original audit quote was just for the actual audit, I didn't realize that. So, it did not include the recreation schedule audit required for county agreement. And I have now been informed that we require to have an annual pension audit, my L and E. So, we are required to submit one for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three. So, after twenty-twenty-three, they will be able to apply for tri-annual pension audit, so one every three years, if we have a clean couple of years of audits that's comfortably low. So, this will reduce audit fees in the future, like twenty-four by thirty-five hundred. So, the new quote that I got from Jeanette indicates the total cost of the twenty-two audit of eighteen thousand dollars. This includes the required financial statement audit, the recreation schedule audit, and the L and E audit. And then the two rec audits that they've done already, which is a total of three thousand, and then her quote for the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two pension audit is eight thousand dollars. So, the total audit takes from twenty-twenty-three, which is twenty-nine thousand five hundred, and the approved budget amount was fifty thousand, so I'm expecting... And I'm suggesting that those come out, because MSI, we only budgeted for forty-four, forty-five in operating, and we ended up getting eighty-eight, nine seventy. So, that money for the extra budget, for extra audit, is one of the factors that we thought.
Well, MSI is two portions, operating and capital. I don't know what limitations are, like, I would need to be assured that we actually can, I don't know what...
Oh, yeah, you can use...
You bear with spending the MSI and operating portion.
Operating on anything in operating.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there's restrictions on it. Obviously, capital is very restricted, but I also don't know if that overage is on the operating or capital side.
This is on operating.
Okay, like, that extra forty-four is on the operating side.
It's all, that's all.
And we are not restricted for doing so.
No, we are not.
I didn't know, but I figured I needed to ask.
Yeah, no, that's totally fair, yeah.
Any other questions in there? Don't have much choice, really do.
Well, we don't really.
Can I get a motion then to approve the new amount of twenty-four five hundred for the total audit?
Yeah, I'd move to allocate the additional fourteen thousand five hundred, is it?
Yeah.
Of funds needed to fill the audit requirements.
Yeah, yeah.
To be funded from the overage of MSI funding received.
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to, eleven point one, CFO, Baron's report.
I had asked you a question. Oh, you asked me about capital? And I just asked what's going on, has everybody been doing what they need to do in regards to what they said they were going to do?
Oh, yeah, so the capital, the capital one is on there, you can see.
The bottom, yeah.
Yeah, it's at the very bottom. So, I put it on there with the actual, and I put, like, Kelly asked you guys to move the money around, natural drainage, water and playroom. We have gotten final approval from MSI, and the gas has to go ahead with everything. So, we have the lift station pump, and the river intake pump on order. We just got funding confirmation this week, so after, like, the river...
Oh, so what's going on with the meter purchases?
Yeah, he's going to, all of that's going to start. But now that we got the company, we just want to start in, we're going to get company. And yeah, the G and F, it's going to prove by MSI.
Like, Daryl's budget wants. And then I said, like, and then you guys, okay, let me start from the beginning. You guys had asked us to discuss wants in regard to the budget and suggest where that money should come from. And I had said, wouldn't it come from the budget of the areas that we want them to do the work in? Because then Daryl, the Sam thing, that was already on Kelly's budget. There was a few things like that. So, I mean, if we said, oh, I want, at the record, then wouldn't that just be put into Kelly's budget?
Well, it would be, but how's it going to make sense?
How do you make it be in that, you find the dollar?
Are you going to increase taxes, or are you going to get it from a grant? Or are you going, like, because all this is over and about, like, these projects are kind of like a wish list, so we need a new road, let's say.
Is it user fee based, is it tax?
Well, just like, I mean, Kelly comes to us with a list of wants, right? How do we budget that? We budget it.
Yeah, and it's usually within her, like, similar budget, she doesn't go way out of whack or anything, and then we come, but if this is something you guys want, like, just a question on how you think it should be funded, because, yeah, right?
We just say, well...
Yeah, if there's some new initiative that is a new thing, how do we, what are we doing to, again, are we...
What are your ideas for funding?
If there's no other option, the option is raise taxes. So, is there, is there grants available for it that would just be perfect for that thing that you had in mind, or is there user fees that could offset it? Or is there some way it could drop costs somewhere else to offset, like, I, yeah, like, I get the, if there's something new, if it's just a generic kind of...
No, I'm just saying, like, maybe that just gets added into Kelly's wants. That's part of her, but it's not her wants, it's your wants. So, how do you want to fund it? With her money? With her money? But her money is already operating.
That's just, if you're saying, I would like to fund this by reducing the operating cost in the rec set, like, I want to do this, and I think we fund it by dropping the cost for ice meetings. We're not going to do ice meetings this year because we're going to say we're going to fund this, whatever you're saying, you know what I mean? The money has to be shuffled from somewhere, or...
If you want to put a dollar in, you almost have to take a dollar.
Well, that's exactly it. Then you decide if that's something, yeah.
So, I understand, I was saying, is it just a straight raise taxes? Or are we going to cut services somewhere else? Or is there some other way to fund it?
Yeah, some other way to fund it. Well, this project, we said it that.
Yes, exactly.
Do you have a formula, dollar in, dollar out, or find another dollar?
Yeah.
And there's usually taxes as the other dollar.
You don't want to do that.
No. No, I feel it's actually a good exercise of the, where are you going to get the money from? It's great to have all these lofty ambitions, but they're usually not viable. They're not viable.
There's nothing I'd like better than if we do that road going out towards us.
I would love to spend forty million in infrastructure today, but I know I can't. What's that, still, still, what are those?
Yeah, Remy just got rid of their...
They're still pretty good, like, they're still pretty intact.
Those pitched ones are good, they'll last six to seven years.
Well, I see, you got hundred-and-twenty-year-olds, just wooden barrels essentially still holding together.
That's right, a hundred percent, it's a pitch, right? I think used, not finished yet.
Well, it's hard, you know, hardwoods and, you know, no oxygen getting to it, and, you know, they're well done, but yeah.
Remy came out intact, we were not...
I believe they did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they just, he was under any, so, definitely flooding there. Airwood, um, through a pipe, it was intact.
Yeah, and that crappy orangeberg asphalt stuff, and that, that all comes, yeah, the old wooden, wooden arrow pipe, it looks like arrow, they actually held together great.
Maybe we should see Matt Rurk and give him a bunch of wood. We'll just, what do they call that now? Cording the road. We'll just cord that road over.
And then the other thing I just want to update you on, because we got over today, that the Council approved all of our audit schedules and the budget for twenty-twenty-three. So, just to be, you know, funding a nice, sort of, couple of, one hundred, two hundred and ten dollars.
But we have that all ready.
Well, the money from twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two is done, it's expected. And then twenty-twenty-three, that's a service, that's a service, so it's not extra money.
All right. No questions for the neither. Shit, if not, can I get a motion to accept the Safeway Baron's report for information? Shall we have a favor? That is carried. All right, twelve correspondence, just got a thank you from Cyberg on the weekend. There at the hundredth anniversary, they had MP, Daryl, was there? No, yeah, correct. That was the bank that was there for the county, their mayor, mayor, Warburg, myself, and Amy Matenko was during, there during the day, not for the evening ceremonies, but it was very well attended, and probably a hundred and eighty people. So, yeah, it was, it was pretty good. I know that I didn't make it to one part, but they had ninety years.
I know.
He didn't seem any intention for that, because it just, it just showed up, I didn't see, but I, I had a few little bits of that. You know, it was a very good deal. I, I saw myself, and the people, I saw a lot of people I haven't seen in a long years. So, am I going to get a motion to accept that for correspondence? Favor, carry. Wow. This is the time for gallery? Okay, of course, Shelley.
Okay, so I just had, we've all had, I believe, some correspondence from residents, and I've heard from residents via messages and such, and of course, I've always said that they should contact administration because that would be who they should be talking to. But I've had concerns about the orchard, about the plants on Main Street, about yards, about the law, just basically all of that stuff, by multiple people that are residents of the community, not anyone from, in the community. But I know you've seen and heard some of it too.
Yeah, we haven't had many, typically, I think, my comments in the orchard. That would be that orchard is...
Yeah, it was a horrible idea when we did it, and I didn't agree with it then, and I didn't like it then, and I disagreed with it. From the get-go, I didn't like it.
I don't know how you cut grass when it's a little water.
A, it's where deer go, and deer will eat it even if they live, but they're not going to live because the rocks are going to root out. I agree, it was a horrible, horrible spot, and I sent so from the get-go. So, I don't feel bad if they don't hold up because they weren't ever going to.
But didn't we all agree on that spot?
I didn't agree on it.
Because I thought they wanted to plant them up, and then...
And I said that that can get further discussion, and they wanted to...
I know, I know there was some people wanting to get an arbor stump to look over the swamp. I don't know, none of that happened.
Well, there's no point of getting anyone to, it's a swamp, you cannot plant fruit there, trees on a swamp, it's never going to happen. And then even that deer, they will keep them either way.
And you, and probably the, the land was not level before the trees were planted. Those are natural brackets in there, not going to cut those down. We did agree, if we need to, to wait till it dries up and, and we've seen a long run of the trees, because they're just laid, laid back for the bulbs in there. We're not going to cut all the branches, we're not going to do all the blueberries, red bar, right?
What are you supposed to do, twelve-foot deep culvert to try to, like, do it to the swamp, where roots are going to rot?
They aren't going to rot, and the deer have a great time down there.
Of course.
They were not, did you not come to, I forgot the discussion. You are.
I think you guys, you do, but you guys, I think, discussed, and then you did the left, they wanted to plant them up, and you guys said no.
Yeah, so then they just did what they wanted, definitely.
And then they planted down, because you had suggested something somewhat else.
I did, we didn't. So, first of all, the first place it came to, asshole, which is cool.
Good animal.
So, then I said, the only way, when they want to plant them where they get, I said, the only way you're going to be able to plant it so they live is way up against the tree line, up top.
Yeah.
That's the only place. Come and see, and let's talk about it. Pretty soon, I did big book notifications on Saturday, look at us, plenty. It left that hole all winter, there could have been a deer, it hit it, somebody...
Broken leg, yeah.
Yep, and so I, we filled those in, and now they're hounded me on a regular basis, and I would, really think that, to be honest with you.
I would encourage that approach, because I don't think they ever should have been planted there, I don't see any way they will, they will not survive there either way. So, why, why put resources into a lost cause? It's futile.
And a lot of those varieties, I'm not sure they're all that useful to grow.
You would need to very much baby glove them, putting them where they're getting picked at by deer and where they're waterlogged. Either you can make them grow with very, very, very strenuous attention, that's not where you put them.
No, and you have to caliper them, you have to pick one caliper off another and line them together. They were all worried that spring, I had conversations with people, I had conversations, people that have conversations with predators, but they were worried that the orchards were dry, I said, no.
Oh, they're waterlogged.
Exactly, come with me, I pull up the sink, oh, it's dry, I can walk on top. Let me pull up the drain, and draw it safe.
No, they just, they, they look unhealthy, but it's not because they're dry, it's because they're too wet.
And then some of the trees are planted too close to the one side, but it's three street yards, three street is stuck in the water on them. So, it is a very sad futile, and I cannot, when I, when we didn't have conversations on it, and I'm also what they wanted to do...
Sure, but that spot was just the worst they could have picked.
And I'm not wasting public works resource.
Well, like I say, if it's a lost cause either way, like I say, I mean, there's all kinds of other spots that are viable, that wasn't it.
You know where the best spot would have been, in all honesty, is along the fence, along the ditch.
Yes, I agree.
Perfect spot.
I agree, and that spot was turned down, so, I don't know, I know for a fact it was suggested and said it was unacceptable, but I agree, that was the best spot that I could think of.
They could have put them all in a row, that fence would have supported them, and they'd have lived there because it's dry enough. And if we'd had to run a hose and water their little bit, we were happy to do that.
Well, they were accessible to run a hose then, and...
Or you'd turn them over right behind everybody's house.
Yeah, right along the fence, running all the way to the hoose.
That creates a bit of a, a bit of a break and kind of follows, you know, it would, it would look right, they would be accessible, they'd be, I agree, I thought that would have been one of a few great options, but nobody liked that option, so, then we put them in a swamp, yeah.
And then we're bad because I can't tell you how many days a week I get ripped over those trees. And I'm not, I'll hope you order me, do something about it, I will, but I'm not...
I personally don't wish to spend a penny of money and more than a couple of minutes staying too bad. Well, it's unfortunate, I mean, no one likes it, but...
I don't like doing it, but...
Well, it's, I would like it if they were very, the orchard was very healthy and wonderful, but it's never going to be there, so...
You know, you know where else they could have planted some of those trees too? Because we have planter boxes, we could have, we could have, could have some, we could have brought some over there.
How many trees are there? They just, did they run them?
That's cute. Yeah, that's sensible, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just a couple, it's a number of them.
Yeah, there's pear, there's cherry, there's apple.
It's unfortunate, but I, I agree, I mean, there's not much you can do about it now. I mean, any, any water, and you got a big rainstorm, it's all going to rain down there.
I have a bit, we're right down at one side.
You need rubber boots, if it, yeah, if you just had rain, you need rubber boots to go to that orchard.
You do, and then, what's the guess, oh, why can't we mow it? Did you see all the reeds down there? That's a no.
Yes.
I believe that one, I mean, you know, I'm telling you, they're, but I don't know if they're boots, but you've got to have it. Casey?
Yeah, Casey went down to give it a shot just to see. And then I had people say, wow, I talked to Matt Rurk, and Matt Rurk came, he said, I'm not mowing that down there, I have to talk to you. It was just... Yeah, Casey went down to give it a shot just to see, and then I had people say, wow, I talked to Matt Burke, and Matt Burke came, he said, I'm not mowing that down there, I have to talk to you, it was just one thing.
Well, of course, no one's going to mow there because it's wet.
Yeah, and you wreck your machines. Now, if he'd have got stuck in here with the tractor, we'd have ended up making a mess.
Of course.
Then it would have been worse.
Well, like I say, it was just, yeah, it was a bad decision.
It is. Uh, where, administration to be clear, to be clear, they're happy to work with us for this one.
I just, yeah, I don't like where they did it.
What else did you have, Shelley, do you have to say?
Well, I just said orchards, plants on Main Street are doing poorly, I've been told.
They're all waters.
They're, they're overwatered, I think, though, because a lot of them are dying, and they're not blooming, usually they're big bushes.
A lot of them want to plant it, because.
Well, I think they know what they're doing, it's one of the others, they're just frustrated not watering.
I don't know, I've had similar complaints every year, so I don't know, I, I feel like whatever they normally do, I get the exact same complaint every year, so.
It doesn't matter, people will always complain.
We fill the reservoirs now because we looked at that, see, I gave us a water schedule, so what to do and how to fill, cover the water, and that's what we did.
But then also, it's been raining, yeah, it's been raining, so if it's, they're wet, he doesn't walk, oh, no.
What is the lifespan, I wonder how many, how many days you got left before you get a frost? You got a week, two weeks?
I think there might be frost, like, right away.
I think so too.
Yeah, there was, uh, something in the news, I just saw, I can't remember what date they were saying, what they were saying, like, within the next, like, very short window here, they were talking frost.
Who was talking to you?
Um, that, there's some law, empty lot, and, and then the yard, and then, I don't know, this was mentioned also, I know last year there was the lot that we spent, we got a contractor to clean it up, and I was told that it hasn't been, I don't know, the one that we're supposed to sell?
They're all mowed, there were one, it's probably one, yeah, two of them one tomorrow, Madison.
Oh, did the Madison ones get done?
There were three of them with stuff.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I was looking down the table, but Don and I thought they were supposed to talk about the question.
So, they, they got hold later today, the, uh, the, they're all mowed, it's essentially across the street, they'll be mowed. And, uh, so now, on the twenty-first, we go around town looking for the residential lot, so that's what we do on the twenty-first of every month. We're months behind, and I had a lovely conversation about that today and the day before, and Don, he understands how close that works. But I learned something immediately, it's not the current, I think it was the one, oh, Mark, got white here, he dug the trees before it too long.
Sure, where are we talking about?
Yeah, before you get to the end of, like, you go straight through, before you get to the end, before those, those two empty lots on the left-hand side, there's a beautiful woodhouse there, and he was out in his yard trimming his trees against those big blocks. All right, I still have to talk to him, I don't know where we're going, well, he took me behind his house, so when you go behind his house, there's a green space there, and then you can see the drainage ditch.
Yes.
He indicated to me that that green space behind there is part of that land swap we have to move out.
Yes, that is the town, and that's one of the locations that we talked about doing Orchard Four, that, that is the town, there's, but the problem is, they all think it's their backyard, but it's not, there's actually quite a significant chunk of that is the towns there.
Yeah.
And they were all very upset that, well, what do you mean, I can't park my camper here year-round?
Yeah.
Because they think it's their backyard, but no, it's actually a significant swath is the town.
So does that go around the last house and up into the front, because I think you check the land.
I don't know for certain.
Yeah, I think you check the land.
I, I can't tell you exactly where they're like, but yes, there's that swath all in behind, whether, whether it curves around or not, I can't tell, but I know that, yes, in behind.
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah.
Like, it's like kind of the L where the drainage ditch is, yes, yes, that is, that is the town.
That's where I was thinking the orchard should go to, but I, okay.
And we had, that was one of the places we had highly encouraged the orchard to go originally, and we were told that that was an unacceptable spot.
I think it's because there's no foot traffic, and no, I think that was the big issue, but.
So be it, but it's actually a viable spot for the trees to grow and be healthy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'd rather them have less foot traffic but be healthy because.
Well, I mean, yeah, pure advertising, it's back there, yeah, because I walk back there all the time.
Well, and there is the path along the drainage ditch where you'd almost encourage people to hear, encourage them to come to the orchard, and while you're here, follow along the path and go check out the trail.
The trails, yeah.
Right, you'd almost encourage more physical activity, which was part of the purpose of the grant, by putting them back there.
Yeah, I think, I think we got most of the questions answered, do you have any more?
Fordis lunch tomorrow is at San Luis.
That's cool.
Oh.
Seven thirty at the, I think it's my, it's a franchise manager.
Yeah, just, yeah, we're just talking to the raft, I'm assuming they have a raft or something.
Yeah. And everybody just ordered what they.
Do you need an person?
No, they're, I, I don't know.
No, but I've seen it, I'm not sure. Yeah, no, it was, yeah, it was quite the thing, because, yeah, all those people were like, just walking back there to check what there's, like, they were very upset us walking in their backyard. This is not your backyard, I am sorry to break the news, but.
Didn't you guys make them move their stuff off of there, do you think, council?
We've, we've tried to encourage people to stop using undeveloped laneways across town, there's any number of undeveloped laneways where we've been saying, you can't just keep encroaching onto town land, even if we're not using it today.
Howie.
What if Fordis, like, there's, there's been a bunch where, this is a utility right-of-way, and Fordis can't change their poles because you won't move your old runoff truck.
That's right.
It's actually been a huge problem, because then they, once they get away with it for a few years, it's theirs in their mind.
Yeah.
That's going to be one of the peace officers.
I was just going to say, it's not something.
Squatters' rights do not apply to municipal land, though, it doesn't matter if it's, if it's privately owned land, Albert does it to meet squatter's rights, it does not apply to municipally owned, they could encroach on it for a hundred years and it still doesn't matter, they still can't apply or appeal for ownership of it, but they feel like they can.
Yeah, I watched Fordis one time drive right over garden shed, like, to a garden.
Well, we have, we have places where people have literally built structures in the, in the, the utility right-of-ways or on undeveloped laneways, and yes, then they get very upset when we say, I understand it's your garage, but you built it on town land, move it. So that's, that's what you heard.
Then they go, well, I mean, they obviously didn't, I was going to say, they obviously didn't take out a permit because they would have been told that's not their land, right?
Well, that's right, and so we have the authority without even going to court or anything, can we can move it, or we can just rip it?
Of course, because it's on.
It's on utility right-of-way. What backyards are?
Well, like I say, it's very frustrating, because like I say, like, that little screen space was only one of the numerous problem areas in town where people were upset, saying, well, it's my backyard, and we had to say, I'm sorry, but here's the map, and no one's.
That would be a peace officer project, we'll distribute the map with all of it, so in right-of-way?
Well, see, but that's just it, because then it's a very unbiased, like, you can complain to me all you want, but the peace officer has the map, and this is a legal thing that, gee shucks, talk to the judge, and the judge is going to say, no, that's not your property. No, but that was one of the many areas where it'd be very nice to have a arms-length third party, because then you can say, I'm sorry, but the law's the law, instead of having to try to debate the reason, because sometimes you just can't.
You can't, no.
Like I say, the big thing was, like I say, when there's literally rotting Fordis poles, you're like, they literally can't replace their poles because you won't get your crap out of the way.
That's right, a hundred percent.
Like, this pole's going to fall onto your house, and then you're going to be upset, and half the town's going to be without power because you can't understand where you brought the border line.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
It's very frustrating.
When Fordis was putting the apron, uh, in case Fordis itself was putting the apron, it was kind of a, it was kind of a helicopter, it was a helicopter. So, of course, it was somebody's tower, it's in the back, and they were up close and past, it was.
Unfortunate, but.
Yep, and all they did was, uh, the quarter came very quickly, and all they did was drop the, that can fall off.
Well, that's, yeah, at a certain point, like, your own personal sense of security can't screw up an entire town, or, I mean, you're, you're talking quite a huge areas, infrastructure and services, just because you said so, like, that's not fair, that's not reasonable, and too bad.
I know, we got a lot of.
Yes, there was a lot of, a lot you heard back then, but it was usually because of that.
Anything else?
So, just, I had sent this, because we had just received this, or I just noticed, um, the resolutions for the newly they made, um, should we all just go through this and then discuss? Because it's, I mean, obviously Tracy and I are going to be voting on these resolutions, and they want us as municipality to take a look at them and see which ones perform against which ones, what's important as a priority to ourselves, what do we want to do on that?
Well, I think normally when, like, when we all go there, everybody votes on their own, we don't really go as a general consensus, we.
No, but they suggest that you should.
If there's, yeah, if there's a, if there is a council position on something, it's nice to.
Yeah, we might go, we might sit together on it, yeah. We want to, we worship, look that, look at the next column, we can bring them to twelve, rank them in order. We can put them on the general for the twelve, and just make general comments on them, I mean, there's twenty-four, I think.
Yeah, and then they.
And some of them are non-relevant to, there might be, there's a particular intention for us specifically.
Yeah, like before, the Tuesday, then we leave the one. I just got it, so I haven't.
She, she just sent it.
But I mean, there's a lot about, like, increases of everything and protecting the vulnerable.
Yeah, like, expensive. I feel like one of the vulnerable ways, it's expensive, like, going gas or groceries, I think, like, what? Like, that can't be right.
Try getting gas in B C.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be.
It was, well, in, Warburg, it was already.
We should take our lunch out with a lot of the class.
No, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's weird lately, it's getting crazy.
I think gas for.
That doesn't shock me at all.
Well, if we don't have anything else we can do, then, you know, we're talking to some minister.
I was just curious, what, I don't know what's going on down the road here, but.
Yeah, we can, we can update that.
I'm confused, I thought this tree was going to be closed, but that tree's closed.
No, that was just because Grant was doing his utilities there, he was tied over there.
And then we had a sewer.
We had a sewer break.
Oh, was it?
As he exposed the sewer, and the clay type that's above one side is the overall crack, it's colored.
Oh.
So they had, there was no sand underneath the tree, it was colored, so it didn't, it got, and so.
Well, even if there was, I know it's all marsh under there, so even if there was sand, it long since disappeared.
So, we noticed it isolated, we could, we could follow the crack, and it went maybe that, that far from the color that started leaving, so. So, uh, Alec was doing the tie-in for Grant, and they were locating the water line, found this, so Alec fixed it, so I mean, you know, that was good, it's like a cost of thirty thousand, we're still going to set a pass on it.
I know. Well, there's, there's a number of red spots on Jared's map there, uh, from when we did the sewer in Tampa way back when, that, that's a lot of red, big chunks on that sewer line, and I know the water's probably about the same.
Yeah, it is. So, anyways, Alec has tied into G and M now, that's all done, he's still in the hole. Um, we'll probably spin sauce, this building, I think, it's going to protect it, it's going to stop it, so, but they're running a big plan, so, I'll chat with them tomorrow, probably should be, did I need to demolish that building? So, and I was, I was scared, so, we can start, we can start the prep work in that area, and that's, I think, a little offensive there, there's a lot, um, we just didn't have to do a sewer break today. Then we had a power line go down today, that was, after the.
Heard, I, uh, went to, yeah, go check the nail and thought, what the hell is going on?
Oh, yeah, it was, it was arcing pretty bad, someone, someone walked in, he does, tried to revive.
Well, because there was R C and P too, I was like, this, what is, like, what is, what is going on?
Yeah, I walked down there, and of course, we had to block off the street fire because you need a fifteen-year, um, setback, I guess, when that thing's arcing.
Yeah, well, it can check, it can, it can move, yeah.
A hundred percent because of electricity, so it was a split line, it split off the pole, and what it put there was an thirty, which is, that's what we operated with it.
Close, yeah.
And as soon as they get there, then they stand us all down and get it started again. So it's setting around town for that, and we put it in on the way up coming, um, and, uh, we got the roof pushers finished for, um, uh, local stone sign, and we left it on the first floor. After that's all done, uh, they can have that, the front, the last, and, uh, we're just about, uh, getting a little information on that grant for the, uh, the stop cost for the bus station that we started, uh, for the, if they use, something like that. Uh, so, I think, there's a night out tomorrow, and then some, I don't know, I don't know. I don't want to sit at home, I'm hoping to bring you some help for town. So, it depends on potential, so that's good, um, the water treatment plant is excited, they can order pumps for that intake, the intake main pump is working, and the other ones out. So, uh, anyways, we, uh, we source pumps that are just above, uh, forty thousand. So, and, and so we figure, the intake pump is a thousand by the thousand, by ten thousand, that's actually, uh, I think, that's, and we have the total pump.
They got a crane out, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, so that's good, and there's this station pumps are coming in at thirty thousand, that's shocking, um, and then we will build the. And then we can get this, uh, GPS thing started, and this, this, we, we've got to, we need to play this shit now, we were not, actually, we're not, it's a one minute, that was a whole.
So, when did you say there are no trappings? Like, I mean, I obviously know Andrew as well, and stuff like, getting a crane down there pretty soon is going to start becoming an option.
Yeah, uh, we're hoping to hear before September, about September.
Well, that's still fine, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, if you get too far in the year, and it's, you're not getting a crane down there.
Sure will, yeah, we may be able to.
Might get it down there, but you're definitely not going to get up.
It could be, we've, we've got that much of class, you know, we're going to take.
I guess you could always use a barge or something, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, this flow stuff up the river, right, so anyways, we're, they're pretty excited, and then with the, with the caper project, we can do the, the reader, the reader portion of the, of the meters, we saw all them in town, and then we think we might have enough for maybe fifteen, fifteen years, we'll put them on a problem. And then, of course, we're getting them for the crane, these, uh, we have all the information, according to the problem, they have these, uh, ones that, that are back and down, so can we.
Well, probably, I don't, I don't know how much we'll discuss that, and, yeah, but it's, yeah, fair enough, it's, yeah.
It's, uh, we're, yeah, so anyways, we're going to discovery, that's, that's our conference. Uh, and, uh, what else can I speak on?
What were you thinking about that?
Yeah, there's, uh, when that fellow came in from Bowdoin, he's got the better problem, here's our problem, but I don't think I'm going to set.
They give you no contract, what?
There is.
Can you give notice?
There's no outcome.
Well, that doesn't seem right.
I know.
Every contract would seem to not just not have an outcome.
No.
But you, you have to be able to give notice to get out of the contract, there's, there's, so you can be in a contract for the rest of your.
Well, no, so it's for five years, and we have, so, years left?
Yeah, so.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
So I think we might be able to get out of it through, uh, through letter service. Now, this other GPS is in the phone line, I think, a thousand, and it's going to serve us better, we can get everything, it's a map, we can get our licenses, our, I just underwork everything, everything done. So I guess what Cindy and I are saying is we, we're going to be stuck paying, we expect for another two years.
Software from, well, one, first, we'll pay, we'll show them. And they, the grant, the grant will pay for the initial costs, like, M F I will pay for the initial costs, um, and then I think it was.
Uh.
It wasn't very much, like, fifty hundred or something, it was like super cheap.
And then all we're going to have to do is buy, things that they attach to an iPad, yeah, we'll have to get an iPad, it's what we have.
I think it comes, I think the thirteen, thirteen, I think it covers all of them.
So, just, just for consideration for the next week, but, uh, Sean and I are going to try and get out of this for a service. I don't like double standard, but.
There's got to be some sort of like a remedy section, though, if nothing else, and if the remedy is, well, you're, yeah, like, I, I feel like, yes, it's got to be, even if there's not a termination section, there's got to be a remedy provision, and therefore, we're not happy with whatever.
They allude to that in not providing good customer service, so we're going to get the customer.
Yeah, that's why, so then, either remedy to it, we wish to discontinue the service, like, that's, there's got to be a remedy clause in there somehow.
And they do this, they're, this company is.
So not cool.
I'll tell you where we realized it was really bad was, uh, when the boy began to tree line over behind that, he was feeling, by that, it was on the tree. And it was plugged, it worked in like nine hours, the following, you need like to stop, and to get that thing in plug, finally, the sewer is plugged, but it didn't have plug there, and we got looking, and the phone was like, I was dead. It was actually, but it was, it was, it was showing active, and the line that was actually active was over and wasn't showing. It was actually, it was, it was, it was showing active and the line that was actually active was over and wasn't showing. So that's one thing, the second thing that when they, they came to see it, they were charging in hours for, for service.
But we have a hundred point five hours available.
Yeah, we couldn't reconcile that.
Are they just like default value for it, and they're like, oh, yeah, you have hours included, but we assumed you'd ask if you wanted to use your included hours, like, that's a shady game, that's.
Because then I'm just sure she did call me, does he want all your property accessories put on to the M U site, because you have all these hours.
No, I want you to use those hours available instead of filling, you know, that's frustrating.
Yeah, so we're gonna get them to the, the, uh, the help that they got, what are their employees? Really, well, here's the point, which is you're charging.
Yeah, yeah, don't build the way they are and we still have service, that's, that's actually really frustrating.
And we're gonna get them on that too, so we're gonna work on that. And, uh, but they're, they're not, they're not good. And, and they'll charge you five thousand dollars if you want something put in, so let's say we wanted, I would say, dog like. Put some kind of stick figure in. At least it doesn't throw that, pictures, you've got, you can fill in the ones, you can do all sorts of things. So anyways, we will, we will update you on the site and.
I don't know what I'm gonna say, like, to the point of, um, of double spending, I think it's also really important to, uh, that, well, at a very base, base, basic line of M U site, this is the photo program. They are very basic. Being the same, but when it comes to the actual service they will provide us, while this other program we're looking at is. Well, M U site will charge us like hundreds of dollars just to put a little stick figure on there, this allows it to free, um, because. Tigers, lions, trees.
The fundamental difference is somebody's used to working with private sector versus somebody who's used to working with municipal.
So well, M U site will be like, okay, we'll charge you a thousand bucks and, you know, we look at this line, this guy is a whole asset. Anything you can do.
Well, you guys can use it for public works, can you get?
Yeah, for the. Planters or just anything in your needs. And to do that, most of them.
I'll fight him personally.
Well, now John's here, he better, he has to do one motion.
You have your little boots again?
I'm not sure.